To the citizens of the city of Fulton, I've been videotaping meetings since January of 1992. My only motive is a firm belief an informed electorate will make an informed decision at election time that will ultimately benefit us all. If you share my belief and would like to donate blank videotapes to help with expenses, please call me at (598) 5120. Thank you, my name is Terry Reynolds. Videotapes of all City of Fulton Common Council meetings are available to rent free of charge to the public at Video World. Thank you.
Welcome to the 1994 Fulton River Fest. John Crook, I understand, may be a little late, so we'll go ahead with the pre-meeting anyway, and hopefully he'll be here before the regular meeting opens up. On item one, the agenda, is there somebody here that can speak as to that informational presentation of the municipal insurance reciprocal? I wasn't sure whether my secretary got in touch with him or not, so I left it on the agenda. Apparently there isn't, so we'll have to skip that. None of us really have that much information about it to be able to talk with authority. Put it on the next meeting agenda, please, Mary, and I'll contact the gentleman who wrote to me. Two, Mary, you have something on that?
There has to be more information collected on this property before we can have the public auction. We didn't have quite enough detailed information, so they're going to have to not have the public auction and authorize the city clerk to re-advertise at a future meeting when we have everything we need.
Thank you. Three, we are familiar with that public hearing on the proposed local law to create position of city administrator. Four is...
Bond anticipation note.
Oh, yeah. Bond anticipation note for the purchase of the building and parking lot on West Broadway. I think everybody's familiar with that. Five is a routine advertisement by the clerk of polling places for the '93 general election. Six is routine bills over $1,000. Seven is amend vehicle and traffic coordinates. Well, generally, can you tell us generally what it is, Mary, without having to go through every item?
It's on West First Street, on the east side of West First Street, from Cedar Street to Curtis. It involves Cedar Street, walnut, chestnut, oak, pine, so it's right down, I think, West First Street on the east side. Parking prohibited at all times.
Okay.
Which I think it's prohibited anyway. I don't think there is much parking. The east side of West First Street. There's also installing a yield sign on Sylvan Street at the intersection of Meadowbrook Circle. On Sylvan Street. I don't think so. It says, "Yield Sign." Install a yield sign.
I guess there's also a yield sign that's going to be erected at Sylvan Street?
Mm-hmm.
The entrance to Meadowbrook. Here, familiar with that?
I believe that's the rule. So that people don't park in front of the driveways on the east side of the street, but, you know, he didn't tell me anything.
You want to hold it for the next meeting?
I'd really like to double check before...
All right. We're done.
I just want to make sure that that's, you know, to cover where the driveways are.
Okay, we'll go ahead with the yield sign and hold the rest of the next meeting. Sure. I wasn't familiar with it either. Next item is a letter of disclosure, which speaks for itself when it's read by the clerk. Nine is the purchase of sand for ice control, the bid awards that we do every year at this time. Ten is installing a street light at Burley Terrace. Nymar is asking for permission to install a street light. Does anybody have any problem with that? Everybody familiar with that? Installing a street light at Burley Terrace? Okay, under discussion, teen activities. Dave Tietro, is Dave here?
He said he'd be here around 8:00.
All right. He wants to address the council on that item. Second is the Fair Housing Equal Opportunity Act, which we've been advised by the director of CDA that, was it FHA or who was it? Yeah. HUD is insisting that we pass one, even though it's, it pretty much recites the federal law anyway, that, of course, everybody has to observe whether we have a fair housing act or not, but they are insisting that we have to do that, otherwise there are going to be grants and funds that we won't be eligible for, so...
I think it might be a local law.
I think it, yeah, I think it is too. No, as long as we're doing some action on it, we'll just have it down for discussion and see if anybody has anything, comments on it, and then we'll put it down for a public hearing. School benefit, FHA, how, executive, what's that?
It's John Lavoti, Fulton Housing.
Oh, yeah, okay. John Lavoti, did, everybody read the letter from John? Know what it is? He is asking for permission to attend a school that he feels would be very beneficial, and it looks that way to me. Certified financial planning curriculum, which sounds very impressive. The housing authorities already authorized it, apparently the council has to do it also in order to, for him to attend. So, it looks like something that could be very beneficial. Next item is wildlife control. There's a gentleman who traps animals and relocates them. He wants permission to relocate them on gray bear. And frankly, I have the vaguest idea whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, so something we'll discuss.
What kind of animals do we know?
The nuisance animals, skunks, woodchucks. He's one of our trappers.
Oh.
That comes in and takes them out of the city.
Oh, he takes them out of the city? I didn't know that.
Yeah, he traps for the city and he has to bring them out in the country.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd rather see him in gray bear than in the city. No. I know bears are on here, they're all up in Old Forge.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I thought of that, Jim, but then I also thought, how are you going to identify the animal as the same one that he put in there?
Unless we tag him when we...
I don't think he tags him. Besides, I think if he, I think if the animal was rabid, I doubt like very much if he would turn it loose. At least I hope not. Well, it's an interesting question, because if he traps them here in the city, where's he going to put them, you know? Can't very well put them on somebody else's property, I wouldn't think. Well, we can talk about it. And that's all I have on discussions. Does anybody have anything else they want to... Well, this is only preliminary. It's not in a regular session, no, it's not in a regular session yet. Anybody else want, anything that they want to review before we start the meeting? Okay, what is it?
The last meeting between Regal and Johnson on property, they rescinded. They took a special use from it away from them. I've been fighting this for many months. It's gone into court battle. I spent quite a lot of money on this. I'd like to discuss it with the common council, because this has been passed, and rescind three times, twice, twice, Regal, twice.
Well, it's been rescinded. Well, I mean, I don't understand what there would be left to discuss. We can't take any further action.
I want to know how the common council can pass a law and rescind it so many times in such a short period of time, when I come...
You want us to put it back in?
You do what you want, I'd just like to address the council. If you want to...
All right, okay.
I just want to have my say about it.
Okay.
I mean, you gentlemen cost me a lot of money. Did it feel legal?
Well, at least they had the gumption to do something about it, instead of waiting for the court to do it.
Well, you should have did it back when I started this, sir.
Should have, could have, would have.
And that's the problem with this recession we got right now.
Not sure how that enters into it, but maybe there is a corollary there somewhere. Okay, we'll bring it up. You're welcome. Well, it's going to be the fastest preliminary discussion we've ever had. Probably. Steve, you're going to be the only one here tonight?
Neil Bebe's...
Neil around? Okay. Oh, dear. Did John have any idea what time you would get here, Jim?
Not exactly. He said he'd try to be here by 7:30.
Just hoping he could be here for the public hearing.
If I could go with some of the other items first.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Maybe it'd be better if he's not here, by the time we get to that item, skip it, just go to the others and then wait until he gets here. Do, does anyone who is here for the public hearing on the city administrator have any objections if we skip that and go to others in the event that Mr. Crook is not here at that time? Okay, we'll follow that procedure then.
See, do you know? Didn't Gilliam say that he would remove those poles at the coast?
Yeah, I got a note that poles at West Side Park.
Didn't he verbally tell us if we signed the law, if we pursued an offer that he would go to the expense of him?
Well, he did take down one pole, so people can either add it or there's still poles on.
It seems that I remember that did. Because John sent Bucky a letter to go over and look at it, then Bucky come to me, and I told Bucky, I said, "I thought tomorrow..."
Talking about the Gilliam company?
Yeah.
Bucky and I rode over there, and we thought it'd be a good idea to talk to the traffic department about whether we should or should not take those poles down, because the way it is right now, you can use one for ingress and one for egress, and maybe eliminate a lot of confusion if you get four or five cars all trying to go out at the same time.
Well, has Joe checked it out yet?
I don't know. Not that I know of. Might want to ask him, or Jimmy or somebody to ask him, and, you know, to get his opinion on it, too. Kind of like what they did at Bullhead Point, instead of having the whole thing wide open, cars coming and going, any place in between, they have one, or actually two sets of driveways, places to get in and out.
Yeah, then at least it has some order to it.
You know, maybe they could even put up signs, "In only, out only," that kind of stuff.
What about, aren't those poles liability, though, for the city?
It might not be as much of a liability as if everybody's trying to go out at the same time.
Yeah, you know, if there's something like that. Besides, John, if they can't see those poles, they really have no business driving. Come to think of it, I think I've known a few that couldn't see those poles. No, a couple of people that saw it come in front of me when I was a judge. More than a couple, as a matter of fact. Read about the guy that they arrested after a long jail, and they tested his, test was over 35. At 4:00, you're, you're dead.
But the problem was, you know, he wanted to know when they went over and did the inspection. I can call you, did he? Oh my God, we can vote on the bond anticipation though.
Getting a little high. He was a local idiot. Very arrogant fellow. What times everybody got? Okay, going to open the meeting, I think the clock's a little off. I've got 7:31, several others have the same, and 7:30, so I guess it's time. The common council meeting for 10:593 is open. Want to call the roll, please, Mary?
First ward?
Here.
Second ward?
Here.
Third ward?
Here.
Fourth ward?
Here.
Fifth ward?
Here.
Sixth ward?
Mayor's here. Item one, please. Oh, yeah, that's the one, there was nobody here to brief us on, so we'll have to hold that for the next meeting. Two has been postponed. Item three is a public hearing on the proposed local law to create the position of city administrator. Public hearing is now open.
Excuse me, I'm here to review on item one.
Pardon me, on what?
I said I am here to review on item one.
Oh, great, okay. Want to come up, please?
I don't know how your format works here, that's why...
Well, no, you just speak right into the mic, give us your name, please, and your title, background, or whatever it is, please.
I'm Bob Wallace, I'm here representing Eastern Shore Associates, but also representing the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal and Right Risk Management, which is the management firm that the reciprocal has chosen to manage the reciprocal itself.
Bob, excuse me, can you speak into the mic, because people behind you have a difficult time hearing if you don't.
Okay, is that better? That sounds better.
I hear you fine.
Okay.
Can you hear him back there?
Okay, what I'd like to do tonight, and I appreciate first being able to come here tonight to speak to the council, is to introduce you to a new concept for the managing of the insurance, which typically has been done by insurance, for property and casualty, which is property and liability automobile coverages for the municipalities of the state of New York. And what I wanted to do is just briefly explain what a reciprocal is. You've been getting a lot of information recently in the mail from all the associations, has also been press since the reciprocal was formed. So what I'd like to do is briefly tell you what it is. The New York State Insurance Department, on September 1st of this year, licensed as a company licensed to do business in the state of New York, a New York municipal reciprocal known as NYMER, is the name they're going by. And what NYMER is, is a, the reciprocal itself, what the reciprocal is, is basically self-insurance for public entities in the state of New York. And basically municipalities, all municipalities in the state of New York are eligible to apply to the reciprocal to see if they can acquire coverage through the reciprocal. The reciprocal, the only limitation on it is on population size, which is, it's excluding all municipalities with a population of 400,000 people or more. And so that takes in most of the municipalities in New York State. Again, what it is, it's a form of self-insurance, but it's more than just self-insurance. It's all the municipalities insuring one another for the purpose of providing liability and property coverage for the municipalities. The law required that there be at least 25 municipalities to form the reciprocal presently. Even though it was formed September 1st, there are 30 municipalities that have entered the reciprocal as of the 1st of September. We expect that the number to grow to probably more than 100 by January 1st, and in other states where the reciprocals have come in, five years down the road, in most states, 80 to 90 percent of all the municipalities in the state have entered the reciprocal. The reason they've done that is because there's a lot of benefits to the municipalities themselves that are involved with the reciprocal. Mainly, those benefits are is the fact that the insurance itself and the people that run the insurance company is handled by the participants themselves, which we call subscribers. The subscribers form, and I believe you all got a brochure that we handed out ahead of time, the subscribers themselves form up the board of governors that run the insurance company. And so they actually control the funds, control what's going to happen within the insurance company itself. What the reason, main reason for forming it was the cyclical cycles of municipal insurance and commercial insurance, where some years, there's, everybody's knocking down your door trying to sell you insurance, and other years, nobody wants to sell you insurance. And in 1986, there was an insurance crisis that Fulton felt very heavily, as did many municipalities in New York State, and that's when the legislation was done. But due to the complexity of actually getting this put together, it took several years of research, several years of working with the insurance department and with many other financial institutions to actually bring this to bear. The municipal reciprocal is not the new first reciprocal in New York State. The first one that actually was formed after the legislation was the school reciprocal, which many of you have probably read in the paper, recently the Fulton School District went into that reciprocal. It's the same risk management firm that is handling the municipal one that does the school one, even though they are both separate reciprocals. Some of the advantages, basically, it's taking your own control of your own insurance into your hands and taking it out of the hands of the insurance company is the essential reasons behind the reciprocal. It basically gives you stability in the marketplace, it also gives you a means to develop broader coverages that are available through the standard markets, simply because reciprocal is owned by the municipalities themselves, and what they are going to do is they're going to develop forms and broaden the forms that are going to be common for losses and exposures for common municipalities, not necessarily common to all other industries. And we feel with our research that we've done into this, that the municipal market itself, even though it's had reputations of being poor risks because of all the exposures, the insurance companies traditionally have, at least in upstate New York, and the municipalities that we've insured, have had a very good track record. Presently, our agency represents approximately 60 percent of all the municipalities in Oswego County through standard... through standard markets. This is why we originally got involved with the reciprocal, to find out as much as we could possibly find out about it. And, uh, we, uh, have now been convinced after several meetings with not only the, uh, the risk managers in this, but also the reinsurance carriers that are going to be, uh, involved in this endeavor. And in speaking with the New York State Conference of Mayors, Association of Counties, and Association of Towns, and speaking with their councils, that this is a viable alternative for many municipalities in New York State. Uh, to determine whether or not it's actually going to be a, uh, a good recourse and a good avenue for the city of Fulton, uh, it's too early to tell. What I wanted to do is though introduce it to you and suggest that perhaps it is an avenue you should look into. Uh, if you choose to, basically, uh, we are the upstate representative, or the representative for Oswego County for Right Risk Management. Uh, we would be able to put together a proposal and bring it to whoever the council deemed, either a committee or the council itself, a detailed proposal of what the cost would be of the reciprocal and the actual workings of the reciprocal itself. Thank you.
What was, what been the experience, uh, so far of, uh, these organizations as far as any savings is concerned?
Okay, again, it's very early, there's only thirty that have come in so far. We're starting to price them up against other Oswego County entities that we have. Uh, so far, we have found that in many cases, the cost savings going in, uh, has been anywhere from ten to thirty percent for the municipalities coming in. However, I would really like to stress that a decision to go to the reciprocal should not be made on dollars alone. There's many, many advantages of going into the reciprocal outside of the dollars themselves. But cost-wise, coming in, uh, up to this point, we have seen, uh, again, savings of ten to thirty percent. In fact, one I did today for a local township that we just compared, actually, the savings were about forty-five percent on that one.
How's the municipality, though, budget for it? Isn't there, uh, some uncertainty as to the losses?
Okay, you, you budget for it exactly the same way you do for your regular insurance. We will actually give you a cost with coverage breakdown, we're using standard insurance forms. The main difference is, is the owner of the insurance company. The difference is, is the subscribers themselves own the insurance companies, as opposed to stockholders or policyholders of other situations. So we'll actually figure out dollar amounts for the municipality, what the cost is. You'll know upfront exactly what your costs are going to be.
Who's the chairman of the insurance committee? Jim, do you want to talk to him?
Well, we will as a committee.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Do you want to get in touch with him, or?
You get a card or?
Yeah, actually, in the packet that hand, that we handed out here, there's, uh, there should be a letter with a brochure from it, but if not, make sure to get one to you.
Oh, yeah, there is, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Item three, the public hearing on the proposed position of city administrator is now open. Yeah. I want to limit the, uh, talks, we've been through this twice before. It's been hashed and rehashed, I don't see any reason why anybody has to take more than two minutes to present their views, unless there is some strong reason otherwise. No rebuttal, again, unless there is some compelling reason for rebuttal. And I'll start left to right, first row, second row, and so on, until everybody's had an opportunity. Don?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Don Bullard, and I'm only here to again urge you to adopt this resolution, uh, creating the city manager former government. Forgive me, I have a cold. The city charter dates back to nineteen oh-two, and if one reviews the city charter, you'll find references to horse-drawn wagons and other things that are a bit archaic. The ci, the charter was drawn at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds, and I believe that if this city is to move forward into the years two thousand, we need to amend the charter to reflect a city manager in our, in our city. The city can, in my mind, and in my opinion, save the entire cost of the salary in cost savings, economies, and efficiencies. Currently, they're spending the money in the city, and I think it can be spent more effectively to, to pay that person's salary, number one. Number two, the mayor and aldermen have to stop micromanaging the departments in this city and allowing a full-time administrator to manage those departments. Number three, no other business or industry that I know of has a nine and a half or ten million dollar a year department without someone at its helm. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Vern?
Uh, your honor, counsel, I, I'm Vern Drone from Fulton. I, too, would like to echo, uh, Don Bullard's, uh, thoughts. It's no secret that, uh, I have been a member of the mayor's commission, and I see that we have three or four of the former mayors here tonight that frankly have put this package together. We think that this is something good for Fulton. We have agonized over a lot of provisions that are in this proposal. Uh, this is something that is a collective bipartisan, bipartisan agreement that we all came together with. And let me tell you, on some of these issues, on some of the provisions, uh, we had long and hard talks about these and came to this agreement. I think this is an historic moment, uh, in the city of Fulton's history. And, uh, it should be acted upon and acted upon with haste. Uh, we have been over this, uh, council members have sat in on many of the meetings, including you, mayor. And, um, I thought, back at the end of July, that we had formalized uh, this particular agreement for the position of city administrator. And I would urge the council to act upon this and act very favorably, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Phil Blair. We all know where I stand, I'm against the city administrator. I have asked this council to look at the possibilities of a three-year full-time mayor. I just want to reiterate my stand, I am against a full-time administrator under the conditions set forth in the last, uh, job description I read. Thank you.
Thank you. Dinah?
Dinah Kalyda, I agree, we do need administrator. I do have one question.
Yes.
If you have an administrator, and you have an employee who is having a problem, does he go to his boss, or does he go to the administrator?
Under this proposed local law that's before us, he would have to go to his boss.
He would have to go to his boss?
Yes.
That can't be rectified, there's nothing to administrate?
I tried that, and it did not fly.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the council? Anyone wish to make, oh, yes.
My name is Marjorie Walsh, I'm not a politician, I'm not a former mayor, but I've never worked in a company or an office that if you had a problem between you and your supervisor, that you couldn't go to somebody above them and straighten it out. It just doesn't seem to me that an employee has to answer just to his supervisor. There's a conflict of interest, conflict of personality, you should be able to go to somebody else to straighten it out.
I agree. Al?
My name is Al Scuterie, fourth ward. I'm just going over that proposal. And, uh, I'd like to give my view of it, whether, whether or not it'll change anything, I'm not sure. But you six men are up there to represent the city of Fulton, and you're our voice in government. And I am believing, and I'm, I've, I've gone over the tapes from the three mayors twice, and I'm thinking maybe I've missed something. And I'm, sit down again tonight, and I'll look at it again. But I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think it's saying that the mayor is in direct control of this administrator, and he answers only to the mayor.
That's right.
I think it's wrong. For one reason, we have a mayor and a city attorney that leave office every two years. I don't want a mayor, city attorney, and a city administrator leaving office every two years.
Oh, that's what this says.
I want continuity, I want consistency. I want a man that's going to sign on for a contract of, say, five years, and if he doesn't deliver, do his job, fire him. Keep him away from civil service. If he does his job, give him another contract. But I don't want him answering as a puppet or a deputy mayor to a mayor. I want a man that's not going to be responsible to the mayor or the mayor's party, but to the people of Fulton. And when I want to say in government, I want to go to my counselors, and I want them to speak for me. And I want them to have control over not only the mayor, but the man that he is hiring and working under or over. I think it should be an inverted pyramid. Six councilmen at the top, mayor, city administrator, and then a reverse pyramid. Department heads, employees.
I agree with you all, but that was proposal I made, shot down.
Well, this is my, this is my opinion, like I said, it's probably late.
Yeah.
But in the past, the mayor has been a ribbon cutter. This mayor doesn't cut ribbons, obviously, he's busy in his mayor's office, and he doesn't have the time. But every time I open a paper, that's what I see, businesses opening, chamber of commerce, mayor's cutting ribbons. So what good is this man going to do in office? So I want someone that's going to be there consistently, that can tell the new mayor and some of the new councilmen what is expected of him.
It's going to be the mayor's boy, and the mayor says jump, is you going to say, well, hi?
If the mayor, if the Republicans are in, in office, we're going to have a Republican administrator, and the Democrats have a Democratic administrator, that's a bunch of bologna. That man is not supposed to be working for the party, he's supposed to be working for the people of Fulton. I think it's a serious mistake. Thank you.
Just, just a couple of things. I think that if an appointed administrator is doing a good job, there's nothing in this proposal to say that the next mayor cannot appoint him.
Except it may be a different party.
Well, it could be, but it has to be done with, with the approval of the council. I think that's where the control is. If a mayor coming in is new, and he has a re-elected council who feels comfortable with an administrator that's doing, doing the job, then maybe they would not approve, uh,
John, you better, you better read that again. Mayor has the power under this proposal to fire.
With the approval of the council.
No, no, no.
No.
That's what was, that was the difference between my proposal and this one. John, you better read it again.
We have a puppeteer and a puppet. John, let me ask you something. John?
Kind of lucky.
Have you learned your, your, your job in the last two years? Does it take more than two years to learn your job?
I think the first year.
I think it's the same with the mayor's office, it takes more than two years to learn your job. An administrator can't learn his job in two years.
John, let me read section six to you.
Okay.
The administrator shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor during the mayor's term of office.
Okay.
What does that mean to you?
It says if the council disapproves him, that he's not in there.
What?
No, it doesn't say that. With the approval of the council.
Appointed with the approval of the council, but serves at the pleasure of the mayor.
Okay, but what if the council does not approve your pick?
Well, then, he won't be picked, but once he's, once he's picked, then the mayor has the right to can him at any time.
Yeah, and the public council has no say over that. So if the guy's doing a good job. If the guy's doing a good job, he will stay in there.
If the mayor wants him, if the mayor doesn't want him, he's out.
John? You can't be naive about politics. You can't believe that a Democratic Party taking over from a Republican Party is going to keep that Democratic, that Republican administrator.
Let's take an instance of this council. We couldn't even decide upon police dogs. Or a police chief. Hot, now, can you imagine if George proposed a, an administrator, and he has a Republican council? And we didn't like him? You think he would have gotten him? Don't be naive about politics.
Still begging the question, though, John. Point still is, the mayor under this proposal has the right to discharge the administrator at any time.
To discharge.
So he'd be discharging somebody that he picked.
Pardon? Are you done with me? I'm over two minutes, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just see it that this is something that in order for a person to get in there, he has to have the approval of the council.
No question about it. Percy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? Well, you know, I spent fourteen years in office, but I would like to kind of go back a little bit. When we was working on this proposal, we spent a lot of time on it. And as people get up and they can make comments and so forth, but we forget one thing. The people that put this together, including you, George, spent twenty-seven years in this office. And I think that should mean something when it comes to bringing a proposal before the council. Now, the years in office, including George and myself, and Muriel, and Woodard, and, uh, Werner, has got to mean something to this council, our recommendations. Now, I know, I mean, George has had a tough time in the office. I had a tough time, but I was lucky I had a partner in business. Uh, Ver, Don, and Muriel was more or less retired. You're just not going to find anybody to run for the office if you don't have someone that can back them up, and someone that can sit here day after day. It's an impossible job anymore. You'll admit that yourself, George.
Absolutely.
And I think everybody that's served as mayor here would admit the same thing. If you want good people running for this office, you're going to have to have either an administrator, an assistant to the mayor, or the man that runs, that runs the whole, the whole shebang, and that would be, as far as I'm personally concerned, that would be the man similar to the one that's in Watertown, New York. If the mayor is elected non-political, and the, the man that takes care of the, the office, as far as we're concerned here, would be the administrator. And he would be in charge year after year. But we've got to have somebody, you just can't bolt this thing down. You've got to have either an assistant, administrator, or a city manager type government. One or the other, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, yes, David. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, David, but this young lady in, in the, in the middle had her hand up right after Percy, if you, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Fred Foley, um, with due respect to Mr. Patrick and the former mayors, I would like to give an opinion to this. I, I think we need an administrator, but I think the language needs to be adjusted to the term of the administrator. For one thing, how are you going to get anyone to take a job that will, you know, is not secure for two, more than two years? You know, someone who has all the qualifications that you asked for. And also, this, um, person, I think the employee should have access to this person, because sometimes when you go to a department head, you can't get the, the answer or the, you know, the, um, results that you want. Therefore, you can go to this other person if you need to. Now, if you had Mr. Tieto that was here only two years, you certainly wouldn't want to replace him after two years. So a, a job that entails so much work should be made permanent. I guess that's all I have to say, but I do say we do need a man, but the language, I think, has to be adjusted.
Thank you very much. David?
Just to reiterate a little bit on what's been said by the mayors that were up here, I don't believe that there's any contest whatsoever that we need a city administrator of any of the people sitting on this council. I think the only contest we have going here, any consideration of a contest, is whether this person is going to be able to be hired and fired by a body rather than one person. I know that, I know that Muriel very graciously stood up here and gave her opinion the last time, that she certainly wouldn't want to work for somebody that came in on the wrong side of the bed, and he didn't like the way you looked this morning, and said, "You're out of here, you're gone." And I can understand that one hundred percent. Well, I don't know, as mayors are always even on uneven keel all the time, and they don't have feelings, and they don't... have feelings and they don't get up on the wrong side of the bed themselves. And to put a perspective in light at saying the mayor comes in and this guy is irritating him maybe for a week, he's made some decision, the mayor doesn't want to go along with it, and maybe the straw that breaks the camel's back is he doesn't feel good and he's got a cold, he comes in and this person irritates him a little bit more and he says, you're gone. Now, what we've done is we've taken a lot, possibly a lot of expertise, it took a long time to find a person, all of his knowledge that he's done in the city workings, and it will be gone in a flash. What we're looking for is a way to save dollars and cents for the taxpayers here, some continuity with department heads so that there is a matter of record of where our expenditures are going. This would be an un, un invaluable amount of information for any new mayor coming in. He doesn't have to come in, this man can lay it out and say, look, if this is what's happening, and I don't think that any of the mayors in the past have had that privilege. It's very, very difficult to put things together in the first few months in office, whether it be the mayor's job or the alderman's job, is spent finding out what's going on and knowing the ropes and learning who you contact to do what, what committees you do, what the committees are responsible for. This man with the outlines of his job would have those responsibilities. And yes, he's going to have to be, and to quote Muriel, some kind of a Superman, and yes, yes, he's going to be a professional. And I feel that if he's in here with the majority vote of the council and the mayor, that he then has a general consensus of a body, not a person, and he's going to be around a while if he's doing his job, he will not become a political pawn. And I'm afraid that if a mayor appoints with, even with the approval of the common council, but he can dismiss at any time, that that possibility lurks in the, in the closets of what the operations of the city are. And I don't feel that it's in the best interest of doing that as far as taxpayers' dollars and getting the most out of the position for what it was intended for. I also think that employees should have another avenue to go to other than their immediate supervisor if they cannot solve a situation with the man that they're working for. And if we close that door, I don't think that's a fair labor practice to the people that are, that are really working for us.
Yeah, I have to agree with David, that I think the continuity is very important. I know that when I came in and had to learn this job all over again, it meant a lot of time wasted and a lot of effort and a lot of experience that was wasted too. Another thing that I don't think anyone would think of, a lot of the duties that the administrator would perform are presently really performed by the city clerk. He's the one that takes all the brunt of the new people that come into office to try to find out what's going on. And that's really not fair to him. I know that he and Mary Campbell carry far more of a load than they should have to, and that's, that's part of the reason why. We don't have somebody in there who has continuity. Not only that, if you have a man that figures he's only going to be in there for a couple of years, it's not a very secure position. And yet, you can't give him permanent tenure, because then if he doesn't do a good job, you can't get rid of him. So I think that the continuity and the security that can be provided would be, in some measure at least, if he could only be discharged by the mayor and the common council instead of the mayor alone. Yes? You want to come up front? Front, please.
As far as the concerns about the employees not having a place to go, every contract has a grievance procedure. And the mayor is not the last word, or the department head is not the last word. There's a grievance procedure in every contract in the city. So that, that shouldn't be a factor.
The only problem with a grievance procedure though is that sometimes it winds up in arbitration, which is very expensive for both sides. But he's correct about that, there is a grievance procedure. Yes?
My name is Joe Langley, and I just had one quick question. It seems to me that you've had former mayors talking about this. Have you talked to any of the department heads and gotten input from the workers in regards to this position? Has that been done? Because typically with a company, if you want to find out what's wrong with a company, you ask the workers, you don't ask management. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Yeah, anybody else?
Yes. I would like to ask both, Vern and Don, are you satisfied with what's before us right now?
Yes. Yes.
In part.
It's on the premise that with my conversation with Vern, that.
We talked twice today.
Okay. That's the same as what he, the original mayor's put together. I did not see the whole proposal until just a moment ago, this lady was hanging up a little glance to it. But I'm sad, and will add, I'll stand up to speak, the checks and balances, mayor and members of the council, is that the council could stop funding if they were abandoning the city manager. And I believe with all due respect, if the mayor would then have the city manager, we go pay, we wouldn't stay around. So the council probably in actuality couldn't agree with that city.
To answer Mr. Langley's questions, I did talk to the department heads, and they were in agreement that we did need someone here all day long that they could talk to. I think one of the problems we have here is that we're dealing with really an abstract, an abstract concept. We've never had one, and we don't know what's going to happen. We have no frame of reference, and we're never going to know how it works unless we implement it. We know that it doesn't work without an administrator, and unless we try something, and we are going to be going through a transition with a new mayor, I think we owe it to both of those or three of the men that are running for office to give them the opportunity to start down on the right foot.
Anyone else? Yes?
On November the 2nd, you will be electing a new mayor, and both candidates so far have announced their platforms. A, an administrator will help them translate their platforms into action. And that is why we, the former mayors, felt it was so important. As the chief executive officer, administrative officer of this city, the mayor who can call out the troops in times of emergency and is the final word, and administration in this city should, should also have the authority to, I have the full power over his administrative assistant. And I hope that you will support what we have worked very hard with many arguments and many adjustments to put into paper form here. And I sincerely hope you will support it. Another thing the employees do, I, I, I don't know how active the union has been during your administration, but I was called on regularly by union leaders in this city over various improprieties or infractions or inconveniences that occurred in the city with the employees so that they're not without power themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had two questions. Go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, Dick Allen. The question I have to the former mayors is why do you feel so strong that you should have the full power over the administrator? That is my question. You can't run the type of city that Fulton needs if you're going to have a person who is always constantly worried about who's in office. It, it should have nothing to do with that. It should be done strictly on his qualifications, how well the job is done. If, if nothing else needed, why don't you just take and put in there that, that the administrator cannot be dismissed without cause and it has to be approved not only by the mayor but the council, both the same as it is for hiring this person? Because it's too important a job to just let it go, because there's a conflict either due to politics or whatever. I've never had nothing to do with politics and I don't think I ever could, because to me, politics, as far as Republican or Democrat or whatever it may be, that is not in the best interest of people. What's best interest of the people is, is what we're trying to resolve here. And that is, is have a person who is going to be responsible for the city of Fulton and not to just the one person. Because ultimately, if, if the mayor can let the person go just because, whatever reason, without no provisions for saying, well, you're, you're gone, that's not right. There has to be provisions and therefore, if, if he's not doing a good job, yes, by all means, the mayor and the council should have the, the authority, the same as they did to hire him, to let him go, but not without that written in. That's all I have to say.
Well, again, I agree that it shouldn't be only up to the mayor to do it, but if you put in provision that he can't be dismissed only for cause, then you're going to have the same problem that they're having in Oswego, where they've had two chiefs of police for years. Because if you have a man in there that's just not doing a good job, and you've got to go through all that to get rid of him, and believe me, it creates a very unhappy situation. You really need the power in a position as sensitive as administrator to let a man go without having to prove that there is cause. It's no different than the industry. You don't see people in positions of responsibility and power, you've got to go through practically what we call a section 75 under civil service law to get rid of them. You have to get rid of them, get rid of them fast, correct problem. And it really is the same thing, I think, with that type of position. Anyone else? Diana?
I have some more questions. I hope something's already. What do they use for experience? Do people check with other cities that had administrators? Have you done any homework at that point? How do they get them? How do they keep them? How do they use them? Do they do the same thing? Oswego, have you used other people for, I mean, other examples to know how it goes?
A Oswego mayor appoints his own administrator. There have been two Democratic administrations, and each mayor has chosen his own because.
And how has it worked out?
Very well.
As far as we know. You wanted to say something? Don?
My name is Donald Walsh. I think, if you recall back a few years ago, that Auburn had a problem with a management. And now they have an administrator, and everything seems to be going pretty smooth over in their district, as far as I know. And I read that the administrator's been doing a fine job over there.
A lot of cities have had problems with city managers.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes?
I wonder if there isn't going to be a problem if you have too short a term, if you don't have any specific stipulations in the contract, if it's not going to be just as hard to find somebody to apply for this job, if they think that after two years, or, I mean, who's going to be able to leave their job for a two-year job and then go back to start? Do you know what I'm saying? They're going to need something to hopefully have some security.
You'll find that this has been the experience of other cities, that these administrators are generally professional people and they do go from job to job, and it seems to work Anyone else?
I, I think we can all agree that we had a lot to do with Neil Beebe when he came on here and how that process was done. You did most of the interviewing, shared it with us. And in the powers and duties section under letter, letter L, it says, assist the mayor by making recommendations for the appointment and personnel in and among agencies and departments of the city. And I just interpret that as that, you know, maybe the mayor and the administrator may be the only people involved in appointing new personnel.
Yeah, that's exactly what it means.
The other question I had was letter M, right underneath it. Says assist the mayor in providing for and directing the internal organization and reorganization within individual city departments or agencies where consistent with applicable law. If a department is reorganized, would that be done?
No, you, you've got to read where consistent with applicable law.
Right.
In other words, all they can do is plan and recommend to the council, they wouldn't have any power to change anything, Jim.
Okay, that clarifies it.
It's a good point.
I'm assuming that this person will have a benefits package just like any other employee would have?
Yes. John?
Hi, your honor. Speaking from a young man's point of view, the person that you put into this office, if it's only going to be for two years, it'd be kind of like me trying to run for your office. Why would I give up my job to run for a job that pays less and I could be out in two years? It doesn't make sense. Longer term should be established for a city administrator.
Well.
For, for one, you don't learn your job in two years. And I assure you know that.
Oh, yeah. Well, see, again, that's the reason why I think continuity is better established where the, he serves at the pleasure of the mayor and the common council. It's a heck of a lot harder to get seven people to agree on firing somebody than it is one. So he has some sense of security there. But again, you can't give him a definite term, because you run into that problem, if he's not doing the job, you can't get rid of him. Then you either suspend him and then hire somebody else, and you're paying two city administrators, just like they paid two city fire, police chiefs in Oswego for years, and this has been repeated in many cities where somebody has what we call loosely tenure. It's a very precarious thing to do.
I'm not asking for a five-year term or a two-year term, but if you consider it maybe an option of a three-year term, that way you have two different councils and two different mayors, two different parties who are elected into that office and don't show some type of bias.
A lot of cities do this, and it works out pretty well. And it seems like that they are able to establish a rapport, and if they don't, they move on, because they're just as anxious to have that kind of rapport as the city officials are. And they realize that that is a risk of the profession, otherwise they wouldn't be in it.
I, I just don't think you're going to get somebody, in my own opinion, I don't think you're going to get somebody that's going to handle two years knowing that because a Republican Party comes in or a Democratic Party comes in, or maybe a whole flock of independents come in, they're going to change like that.
A town, a town, a town near Schenectady just did it, and they had tons of applications. The village of Cheryl, both places, I've talked with the officials there, and Cheryl got 50 applications and stopped taking anymore.
Well, there's a, I know there's a lot of starvation out there for, for good quality jobs such as this one, but getting a good quality person to fill that job for a period of two years, I just don't see it.
Well, as I say, it's done all the time, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I think from the, oh, okay, from the comments, I don't think we're ever going to get anybody, everybody to agree on what we should have. We can go back to the table every week and come up with a new proposal. You're either going to have to try it and see how it works or forget about it, because it's, it's becoming really very labor intensive now, and I can't see where we're making any headway here at all.
Hi, my name is Marion Brewer. First of all, I'd like to know, were there any other avenues considered besides an administrator?
Oh, yeah. City manager was considered.
City manager? Any other than just that?
I'm not really aware of any other alternatives.
Full-time mayor.
Well, except full-time mayor.
And what did you do to the consideration?
Well, one of the problems, I guess, with a full-time mayor is the only ones who really have the time, they can afford to do it, are those that are retired or disabled, permanently disabled. And of course, that limits the people who are actually eligible severely.
And I also feel that the next new mayor should be the one that is mostly involved with this administrator if it should come to pass. I feel that in regards to the administrator, the new mayor or whatever the situation might come to be, is going to hire this person through politics or whatever. I mean, we see it all the time in everything. Your best friend, your buddy, your associate, your relative, whatever, you know? And you can say, oh, no, it's not going to be done that way, but, you know, the word puppet, I agree with that, that's what it's probably going to be. I don't feel the position is necessary, and I think if there's problems within the city, city hall or whatever city organization, that if an employee, and I am speaking as an employee, if they have a problem, they should be able to go to their department head, number one. If the problem is not solvable with the department head, number two, they should be able to go to the mayor, who oversees the department heads. If the problem is so severe that it can't be handled through the mayor's situation, we pay union dues for our union. We pay them to work for us. We pay them to work for us. So where does the administrator fit in there?
Well, the administrator is working with the mayor.
Right, but we're going to come to you second.
Well, you can do that, or you can go to the administrator.
Right, but you're there, so we don't need the administrator.
Well, that's only one example of where you might, you know, be able to dismiss.
That's just...
Believe me, if you were sitting in this seat, you would want an administrator.
You don't know that. And this lady in the green over here, you know, when she got done, she said, "We need a man, George. We need a man or a woman, George."
You're right. You're right. Thank you. Need administrator person, I guess that's probably what you'd call it.
There's nothing in this proposal either that makes this person a resident of the city or not, would that...
Oh, I think you'd be limiting yourself pretty severely if you did that.
But couldn't we put in here that he becomes a resident within a certain amount of time? Because...
Yeah, but suppose...
For an example, if something arises where you need this person, I mean, we're saying how much we need this person, you know, I think he really ought to be a resident of the city.
Well, I suppose you have somebody that lived out in the town, so, and didn't want to move into the city, Jim.
I guess he would get the job.
Well, again, I say you'd be limiting yourself very severely.
I think that goes towards any city employee, George. You want him to live in the city.
Yeah.
That's one of the big things now, is a city's list and all civil service tests. What makes a city administrator any different? I think he should live in the city.
A city administrator has very specific qualifications.
So does a fireman or a policeman.
Oh, what were yours before you became a fireman, Phil?
What was I, a truck driver?
Okay.
I also had to go to school to become a fireman, George.
Okay. I don't think a truck driver could do the job of city administrator.
Oh, I think so. I could do your job, I know that.
Oh, I'm sure you could. I'm sure you, you've made that very plain many times.
I would at least be here most of the time.
Oh, that's good for you. Just being present doesn't necessarily mean you're doing a good job. Yes?
I just have one more comment.
Sure.
I know this is getting long and drawn out. How do you anticipate paying for this position? I've heard Mr. Myers make a suggestion two weeks ago that you would cut the department head's budget to pay for this position. I don't know if Ross told that to the department heads when they were all in favor of this. Is that something that you've even decided how you were going to do that?
Well, when the process of the budget time comes, they're going to look and see what expenses can be cut in different various departments in order to take care of, make that payment.
Because what I see is the same thing that you had two weeks ago. You're not in agreement on the wording, you're not in agreement on how it's going to be paid for, yet you want to implement it. It's the same thing, we're at the same position that you were at two weeks ago.
Okay, that's...
Thank you.
That's an important point, how you're going to pay for it, because you have to pay for someone. And we do put the budget together, and we sit down with each and every department head and go through and see what they need. But there are surpluses in some departments that we can come up with a good salary for an administrator.
Did you tell the department heads that you were looking at...
Did we tell the department heads?
Did you even have any info with those people?
We talk with the, we talk with the department heads when they come in to make out their budget, and when they leave, we're in agreement as to how the money's going to spent, to be spent. We worked out a budget with the department heads last year, each one individually. John and I did, and Jimmy. We didn't have anyone leave angry or annoyed with us because we had to move money around.
No, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you're talking about something that happens after the fact, but what I'm saying is, if you had any discussions with your department heads in regards to this position prior to making up your minds how you were going to implement this position...
I don't think we...
Have you had meetings with the former mayors?
Right.
Have you had any department head meetings? Formalized?
Formalized? We've talked to the department heads. I haven't had anyone disagree with us on an administrator.
Not a one?
No, I haven't. They're there, you can ask them.
Yes?
Is there any reason that you can't, as a council, approve that there, a resolution that there is going to be a city administrator? And then after November 2nd, the common council that's going to be sitting there, with the mayor that's going to be sitting there, work out the details?
When you pass a local law, you have to have all specifications in place at the time. Well, it's a good question. I wish you could do it that way. In fact, I think it should be left up to the next administration anyway. Yes, Ryan?
Do you want to table it?
You say that...
I just saw.
You say that you have a surplus in departments. How about the deficit that aren't going to bother you down? Does it...
There are separate budgets for different departments. You have departments that are not...
Still what it's up to.
Not, not, not when you're making out, if you have a surplus in a certain department, you can't shift money around.
The department doesn't need...
Yes, I'll let this be the one this way.
Revenues coming in. Unanticipated revenues.
Well, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel better about it, too. Anyone else? Okay, public hearing is closed. Motion, please.
Phil, wait a second.
Public hearing's reopened. Oh, did you? Oh, okay.
Sula Barge, and first, it's, we should appoint you as mayor, not as, Your Honor, because that's, this is not a courtroom, this is the common council meetings. And I want to know if the department heads, have they been notified that they're having cuts in their department because of this administrator?
I don't think they have to be.
Why?
Because they don't have to be.
Yes, but that was the thing going on here.
Because they're not the ones that run, this is the council that runs the city, not the department heads.
Yes, but they said that they knew about this.
No, we did not say, I did not say we were going to cut departments. I said we would use surpluses. I did not say we would take away from departments.
Well...
I did not say that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
George, I'd like to respond to that. I'm the one that brought it up before. All I, all it was, was a suggestion, a possibility, that that would be one way of paying for the administrator. I didn't say that we're absolutely going to cut X percent from every department, but the, the idea behind that was that we are going to hire an administrator, hopefully, to make things run more smoothly and economically, and by saving money out of the budget, at least whatever amount of salary we put on for the administrator, he or she would save at least that amount, and that's where we would pay for the administrator. But just to say that we're going to cut all the departments, or, you know, put a figure on it, isn't what I had in mind when I said that.
To begin, we're looking at a, at a 94 budget. We're not, we're not talking about the 93 budget. We're not going to go in and do anything to anyone's budget at this time. We would build our budget with this in it, not cutting anyone, building the budget.
I talked with the expert at New York Conference of Mayors on this, and he said that the experience of other cities has been never less than 100% savings, over and above the salary of the administrator for cities that have put him in there. And I feel that this could certainly be achieved here, if not, not more. It's nothing different than a city engineer. We probably saved 100, at least $100,000 this year, having our own city engineer. I hate to think what the cost would have been if we hadn't had the city engineer when we implemented the Nestle sewer project. He has spent tremendous amount of time on that and done a fantastic job. And if we had had to hire an outside consulting engineer to do his job, we would have spent at least $100,000. And the same thing is true, I think, of the administrator. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed.
Whereas Republican members of the common council and all in attendance have had an opportunity to express their views regarding said proposal, now therefore be it resolved that local law number five of 1993, to create the position of city administrator, is hereby adopted as per attached.
I'll move it.
Second?
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
No.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Not a money issue.
Can I vote on? No. Item four, please.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of $122,000 of serial bonds at the city of Fulton of Oswego County, New York, to pay the cost of the purchase of a building and parking lot adjacent thereto for city purposes.
I'll move it.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ross, opposed?
Opposed.
John? Lincoln opposed. Carrie? Five, please.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise the polling places in the city of Fulton for the 1993 general election.
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Six, please.
Resolved that the following bills are hereby approved for payment. Cole Palmer Instrument Company, $1,780.53 for one pH meter and recorder to be a direct charge to the G-8131.20 industrial pretreatment account. Jones Chemicals, $1,918 for ferrochloride to be a direct charge to the G-8130.40 sewage treatment and disposal account. Jones Chemicals, $2,100 for chlorine to be a direct charge to the G-8130.40 sewage treatment and disposal account. Vilano Brothers, $1,522.44 for hydrant parts to be a direct charge to the F-8340.40 transmission and distribution account. Oswego County Salad Waste, $10,328.50 for tipping fees to be a direct charge to the A-8160.49 refuse and garbage account. The above items are budgeted but are over the $1,000 city charter limit, requiring common council approval.
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Seven, please.
Resolved that the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the city of Fulton, New York, be amended to read as follows. Chapter 165-53, Schedule 9, Yield Intersections. Yield sign on Sylvan Street, direction of travel south at the intersection of Meadowbrook Circle.
I'll move it. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Eight, please.
Notation that the deputy city clerk has advised this common council at this meeting of October 5th, 1993, that the proper letter of disclosure pursuant to Section 803 of the general municipal law has been filed with her by the following employee, and that said disclosure is entered into the minutes of this common council meeting of October 5th, 1993, as a matter of record. Firefighter Aaron Howard Carpenter.
Nine, please.
Resolved that the DPW commissioner is hereby authorized to purchase ice control sand from Robert L. Weaver, Box 59A, Avery Road, Constancia, New York, under the county bid at a price of $1.75 per ton, to be a direct charge to the A-5142.40 snow removal account, and is also authorized to exceed the $1,000 city charter restriction without council approval in these purchases.
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Ten, please.
Resolved that Niagara Mohawk install a 100-watt high-pressure sodium streetlight on pole number 26-5 on Burley Terrace.
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Under discussion. Item one, teen activities. David Tietrow present?
He'll be right back.
Yeah, I saw him, he was in the back.
Okay, well, we'll go on to number two and take up one when he comes back. Fair housing equals opportunity law proposal.
Fair housing law, basically what it does is prohibits any discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin in the sale, rental, or advertising of dwellings in the provision of brokerage business, or in the availability of residential real estate-related transactions. This applies generally to all housing in the city, actually applies to the whole country, with a few exceptions which deal with a single-family unit that is sold by the owner without a broker, one time only, within, I believe it's 12 or 24 months, something of that kind. This is generally what we're talking about. Anyone have any comments on it?
Okay, who's the committee on this?
I don't think we have any ideas.
Are you?
Yep.
David, will you, will you go up with your committee and make your recommendations?
What committee?
There was one. Craigson and I noted on it, well, he asked me about it afterwards, we will not show you where, said Bill, made you show us that city. So that's... Who? Committee, standing committee?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't, didn't crack the passage.
Oh, no, I wasn't, I just referred to the standing committee. Item three. John Caloni, I believe that's your baby.
As part of my contract with the Fulton Housing Authority, we try to follow the same guidelines that you give all your city employees, one of them being, if I have any additional education that I feel is necessary to help me along with my job, that I ask my board for their approval for any additional schooling monies, and should I fail to meet the required requirements for the courses or the curriculum, that I pay that money back in full. The housing authority's in good standing right now, as far as finances go, we have no problems, so we've taken care of a lot of them. Basically, what I'm asking for is 2,000 for additional schooling for a certified financial planner. What this will do will allow me, when I get my degree, to be able to give me an idea of buying and selling stocks and bonds for the housing authority at no cost to the outside, from the outside coming in to try to buy or sell stocks and bonds for the housing authority on their behalf.
Why would you be dealing in stocks and bonds?
We have a, it's similar to what the city has, we have a reserve fund that we are, every year, we put additional monies into this reserve fund to help us with capital improvements down the road. And by investing in better returns, investing in safe stocks and bonds, such as, you know, higher yielding interest rate, savings accounts, or maybe bond accounts, we're able to put that money aside for future projects and earn a higher rate than we would if we left it in our pants.
Isn't that kind of risky, to invest in stocks?
Well, that's what I, I'm saying, is we have to invest according to New York State guidelines, and this will help me understand what those guidelines are.
Those New York State guidelines are pretty broad.
Well, it's two years of schooling, it's two years of schooling.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you feel that your budget out there this time, Lawrence, with no problem of funding this school, it's going out there, and I'm sure it will return when you get through it, but you have no, no qualms whatsoever about utilizing the funds that are in your budget out there?
No, 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 no. We have $176,000 for state subsidy that the state gives us during our last budget. When I set up the last budget, we had somewhere in the area of $80,000 to $90,000 that we can put into the reserves, should we stay within our budget means. So we have plenty of room to make any type of small adjustments to the budget.
Is this a classroom course, or is it...
Is this a classroom course, or is it a correspondence course?
It's a, it's a course that is handled at home, and what you do is at the end of your three-month study program, you go and take an exam at Cugee Community College. At the end, you take a conglomerate of our, I think it's an eight-hour course, eight-hour test, and if you fail to pass it with a C or better, then you don't pass the course. What it does is it actually licenses you in the state of New York to practice financial planning.
This is a satellite course through community, Cugee Community College?
Yes, it is. You take the test at Cugee Community College, and it's offered through the Colorado Business Institute.
John, I don't have objections to your taking the course, because I think, you know, that kind of education is valuable for any municipal employee, but to even dabbling in municipal bonds today has become a chancy proposition, and you're talking about investing in stocks, and I've been in stocks and bonds for forty years, and let me tell you, you can read all the experts you want, and you'll find, always find, one that says pro and one that says con, and the stock market is like a yo-yo.
No, I understand that, George, but what the housing authority's regulations specifically ask you to do is to invest safely in safe stocks and bonds.
There ain't no such animal as a safe stock.
This is what their guidelines are, and if I can figure out exactly, or not exactly, but what they're asking me to do, I think we'll be a heck of a lot better off than not knowing what I was doing when I'm going.
I think you're a heck of a lot better off putting it in the bank.
Well, that's your opinion, George.
Well, that's true, but if you, if you'd been following the stock market in the last six months...
It's like asking your city administrator to come do a job that he knows nothing about.
Okay. Guess it's live and learn.
John, when you, when you invest in the stocks, does that have to be with the approval of the board before you do any investing?
It has to meet with the approval of the board and the state of New York.
Okay.
My, uh...
Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment. My only, my other only concern is this, is that I have from time to time, not just for this gentleman here, but put forward the emphasis that we should spend more city dollars in training some of our city personnel to enhance their expertise, saving us tax dollars down the road, which has been proved to us over and over again through our water and sewer department and the work they've done for us. It's also with the, with the DPW in the city, with paving our streets, they are saving us money. I feel that they're saving us money, and I think they're doing an adequate job, so I think that any training that we can fund or pass on to any of our employees is only going to come back a hundredfold to the city, and I, I just think that it's a good idea to make a man as prepared for his job as he can possibly be.
I also wish to add that if I do not meet the curriculum requirements of this course, the money's reimbursed in full out of my own pocket. And it's, it's a no-loose situation for the housing authority. If I pass the course and I have the intellect to go on and make reasonable decisions, if I don't, then I just give the money back to the housing authority.
I don't think you should have to do that.
It's part of the job.
I, I think it's a good, good thing, it's a good investment. I don't have any problem with it. Anybody want to...
Your honor, if there is no other discussion on this, I would like to make a motion that we, we give this gentleman the amount of funds that he needs to pursue the schooling, and he made the stipulations himself in the letter presented to the council about repayment if he should fail the course, and I think that's more than fair on his part, and I think we ought to be fair on our part, so I'll move it.
I'll second it.
I'd like to abstain.
Pardon?
I wish to abstain.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
First Ward?
Yes.
Third Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
Yes.
Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Carried.
Thank you very much.
Item four, wildlife control, relocation of animals, great bear property. Anybody want to be heard on that? I think it's over a hundred acres. Lot of property.
Is this, is this just for the animal control of the city of Fulton?
Yeah.
Pertaining to outside, uh, control officers coming in to pick up wild creatures?
I understand it's only animals picked up in Fulton.
The animal control officer in the city of Fulton only handles dogs.
Yeah, this, no, this isn't our animal control officer, this is another man who, who, uh...
It's a trapper.
A trapper who does this. Well, there's a wild animal in the city we have to call a trapper like this guy to come in and do it, the animal control officer doesn't do it.
Do we have the name of that officer?
Pardon?
Do we have the name of that officer?
There are three of them.
Abraham.
There's three or four.
Daniel Abraham.
Daniel Abraham.
One of several trappers that work in the city.
He's the one that contacted me. Yes.
How do you know if these animals have rabies or not? What's he doing with them?
Well, I imagine, you know, if he's an experienced trapper, that they can certainly tell.
You can't tell by looking at an animal if it's got rabies or not?
No, well, I'd rather have rabies out in Great Bear than here in the city. Unless he's, unless he's slobbering at the mouth or trying to crawl up your leg, then you might get a little suspicious. Uh, no, I, I'm serious, though. I'd certainly be in favor of trapping wild animals in the city now that rabies has become such a problem, because, you know, animals like skunks and raccoons, they have no compunctions about coming into a city, and they can be a real nuisance even if they aren't rabid, and there's always that risk, of course, that they carry it. And I really, that's my preference, anyway, I'd rather see them out in Great Bear than here in the city.
Do we know where they take them now? I mean, they're being...
No, they, yeah, he does have permission from other property owners to, to leave the animals in the other properties.
No, no, no.
I don't think so. Anyone else? Thanks a lot.
He's not here, I think he saved your...
Okay, Phil.
Mayor, do you know the frequency of this? How many animals we catch?
No, I guess it's something that's very sporadic.
We have three trappers that are for skunks, woodchucks, nuisance animals.
I bet you there's several. I don't know about the rest.
I caught it.
And the areas where they have, since this guy has been relocating his animals, it's becoming overpopulated, so he wanted to find an area where there wouldn't be quite so many.
Exhibit one. Anybody else?
George, David has been in the city for years.
Have you, Mike?
I know. I used to give all kinds of...
Why did this come up suddenly now that I...
Maybe the guy who gathers any place to look. So, that's why he said the number of these trappers, like, in the city.
Of course, the number of wild animals hasn't increased a lot, all you gotta do is drive up four eighty-one to see that. Yeah, I caught one once, and I lived over on North Pollard, I trapped a woodchuck in a, in a pipe under a driveway, flushed him out into a trashcan with a hose. Had him on exhibit for about a day. Then decided to let him go, and my son was really upset. Fun to keep? I said, "No, it costs too much to feed him." Any other comments on this serious problem? Tell you one thing, though, it is serious about it, if a rabid animal ever bites your own animal, then you've got a serious problem. So, I, I think it's a good thing. Ready? They make good pets if you decent them. Decent, I like that. Well, okay, I think we can go on to the next item. Dave Tietrow, is Dave back?
Mr. Mayor, member of the common council? Glad you're all in a good mood for this. Back during Ron Woodward's term, I don't know if you remember, not I established the Fulton Teen Council, and the main reason it didn't work is because of the lack of involvement of the teenagers in the community was the main reason. Now, at a former common council meeting, Mr. Mayor, you received, I believe, three letters from teenagers in the community that they wanted to know if you could provide something for them, and based on that, I called my alderman, John Lincoln, and gave him some pros and cons of what happened back during Ron Woodward's administration when DePaul's Pub opened, and I've spoken with Mr. Mike Egan, he's the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and one of the suggestions I had to Mr. Lincoln was if the city would agree to provide a place for the teens to go, as an example, maybe the War Memorial, the community room downstairs, if you would agree to that, Mr. Egan said he would address both student bodies at the junior high and high school, and ask them what it is they wanted, what they wanted to do with a place if it was available to them, and maybe get some more input than just three letters. And both, I'd like to include both the PTAs at the junior high and the high school in helping with this, and then get the parents involved, and do, give them a place to congregate. I spoke with a woman named Sushi, she's the manager at Burger King, says that does become a place for teens to hang out, and most generally it ends up in trouble with the police being called to remove them, and from what she told me, it really is not a benefit to their business to have the teens congregating there, and she also said that Burger King would be supportive of anything we came up with for the teens, whether it be financially or providing food or drink where they congregate.
Dave, are you aware of Reverend Bruno's efforts to...
Yes, I am, I've spoken with him tonight.
Because I have talked to him, and he has sent a letter, the council has copies, and the matter's been referred to the youth committee, and what I think you ought to do is you and Dave should get together with Reverend Bruno and come up...
If I could, your honor?
Sure.
Dave, there has been a committee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday night at seven o'clock, and I'd like to invite you and Reverend Bruno both to that.
Sure.
And we can possibly make some connection between the two and get a program together that would work.
One of the things I did point out to Reverend Bruno is I still would like to see an alternative provided to the teenagers, and to let them decide what they would want. For example, if the War Memorial could be made available, or a place that we could provide for them, maybe one Saturday night a month, one Saturday night for the junior high, one Saturday night for the high school, then they could decide what they wanted and maybe get together, hire a band to play for them.
I think that in committee meeting, we probably hash all this out in detail, and we could have a lot more, a lot more discussion, I think we can.
I wouldn't be a bit surprised, too, if you'd find industry, I would be very interested in helping out.
Yes, I think so.
If there's anything I can do, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
David, if I could, that meeting is in the mayor's conference room. That meeting will be held in the mayor's conference room Tuesday night.
You wanted to talk about your problem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my name is Richard Scott, I've been in front of the council before. This is on a special use permit, which was looked into back in February, March, by Mr. Regal, Mr. Johnson. It was sent to the planning commission, they refused it. On the thirtieth of April, these gentlemen were issued a permit through the zoning board. On the fifth or fourth of May, the common council passed the resolution they could have it. Illegally, they never come to the people. On the eighteenth of May, I brought it to the council, they rescinded it. They held it till they had a public meeting till June sixth. At June sixth, we come, gave both sides, gave our party, both of us had different people here. Mr. Lunnington was given a day off to go to Alaska. You asked that that meeting be tabled until you found more legal records on it. It was tabled to the twentieth of June, at which time I was in the common council office, and you told me then that this thing could not be discussed and voted only. It was voted on again that night and passed by the common council. I had to take and come, me, Tom, and went to Mr. Lunnington, I tried to get him to explain to me why, and what, in his own office with Mr. Lund, he told me they represent the city of Fulton, not me. So I got my own attorney, which we put this into court, and it cost me two thousand dollars, which I don't feel I had to pay, but I got to, because you gentlemen said that this was legal. On the twenty-first of last month, after my attorney sent papers into the court, it hasn't gone in through yet, you rescinded the order again. In six months, you pass, rescind, pass, rescind, how many times have we got to fight this? What does people have to do to the common council? Who's right, who's wrong? You did not come back after you tabled it and tabled it.
You addressing me or the council?
I'm tabling everybody, I'm talking about when you tabled it.
Why don't you address it to council?
I did the common council.
I mean...
No, no, that...
You're saying you, and I didn't do this.
On the sixth, you tabled it. You said you would look into it with Mr. Lunnington.
I can't table anything.
I got the meetings on record.
The council tables motions. I may have adjourned it, I didn't table.
No, no, you asked it to be tabled, it's on the, it's on the motion pictures that they're telling.
Was it tabled by the council vote?
You asked it, then they voted on it.
Okay, so the council tabled it.
But under your suggestion, you were going to check into the legality of it.
Right, right.
You never did. The next two weeks, you told me in your own council office that we cannot discuss it, and you passed it through. It was illegal?
Council passed it.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott, you sued the city, and you have a court date, and the council has acted. They're not prepared today to discuss with you the, the details of that lawsuit. You have a court date on October fifteenth, and the council's acted.
Well, I'm going for my attorney, says that all things have dropped, and it's not going through the court, this I don't know, this is the last word I got from him, Monday.
Well, perhaps because the council rescinded that particular resolution, your action is now moot.
It's still, it's an illegal matter that nobody took the option to see, except one all of it. He stood up for it and said that it should not go. But I won't get into that. Now they turn it back, and they rescinded it because they said the planning commission shouldn't have acted on it, which they didn't in the first place until the legal date went over. They said it goes back to the zoning board. I then to Mr. Lund, which entered that four days before the common council passed it the first time. So where does it all go? What I'm saying, I'm a city taxpayer, two thousand dollars in my pocket is a lot of money, the same with you. I, without this money, I do not want to see any of these people in here have to go through this, because you six gentlemen, your attorney, and you, Mr. Mayor...
Wait, Mr. Scott, if you recall correctly, and you seem to, I was opposed to that. Do you recall that now?
You...
I was opposed to that.
But you asked to have it tabled.
Exactly, because I wanted the legal opinion on it.
When you were to hold on the twentieth, when it's under your...
I was opposed to that right out here in open council meeting.
I'm, I'm a tabled, you weren't opposed to it.
I, wait a minute, I'm, I'm willing to back the mayor up on that, because he, he did reiterate opposition to that before it was passed.
Well, you know, all you people said, I issued twenty people in the neighborhood, and you sat up there and said, "Nobody can live that close." I showed Mr. Lunnington fourteen people when they were in legal part of that city on the zoning, and you people didn't want to listen. So I'm just saying, why should... So I'm just saying, why should the city people have to keep paying because you people don't want to do your job in the first place? Why wouldn't this man talk to me before we went to court?
I'll tell you why I didn't talk with you, because you came in my office, you threatened a lawsuit against the city. I represent the mayor and I represent the common council. They are the body of the city, the municipality. When someone comes in my office and threatens a lawsuit, what did I say? I said, "Please retain an attorney." And you did. You exercised your legal rights. I have no offense against that.
I had an attorney go before them, sir.
Well, fine.
And I couldn't get through to any of you people. And the only way I can get through is go through the...
When you met with Mr. Lund and I, we were more than willing and prepared to discuss it with you.
No, you were not.
But you decided that you wanted to sue us, so I had no other option.
There's a gentleman over there that I've been in his office 15 to 20 times and we cannot discuss this. It all comes back to the city.
Because you're suing the city and I've advised him not to discuss it with you because you're suing the city.
Oh, now you're saying, "Come in and talk to me," and now you're saying, "This lawsuit cannot go through."
All right, okay, Mr. Scott, thank you. Anyone?
Is this what it's all about, just to thank you and you kiss the public off? Is that what you gentlemen do all your life?
Our aldermen support our ward.
There's all you people up there, do all you people...
All right, Mr. Scott, you had your say, you weren't on the agenda. I gave you the privilege of speaking even though we were not prepared for it. And you made all your remarks.
I'll throw one.
And we've done all we can do to heal the problem, okay? Anyone else have anything you want to bring before the council?
I, yeah.
And? We haven't closed on it yet. Pardon me?
Are you self-sustaining?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I just received today the abstracts and if you saw me as reviewing them and we're getting prepared to close.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely going through. It's been opened up. I'm probably aware of that. Yeah, yeah.
The high school reconstruction is causing many problems around the neighborhoods which surround it. One of them is a bad parking problem that I tried to work with the traffic department on. As you know, we designated areas for them where we wished that they would park and there seems to be an overflow that's flowing down to Denisee Place. Right now, you are allowed to park both sides of Denisee Place and I certainly wouldn't want to prohibit that because anyone who lives there who has company over or what have you, may have to use the off-street parking. Hopefully, the traffic department can come up with some results for that shortly. I have been working with Wayne Blue on it. The other problem there that I'm having is as the students leave the grounds for lunch during their lunch periods and return, they patronize many of our local merchants, which, you know, is good. However, they're leaving their debris in people's yards and the like as they return to school grounds. Anything from sandwich wrappers, to candy wrappers, to cans and bottles and people in those neighborhoods around there, you know, have to pick up nearly daily. I know last year, I was in your office one day and we did mention the possibility of working on some sort of litter ordinance that would reward people who turned in offenders and I wondered if we could, you know, I know we got a lot going, but if we could execute coming up with something. But I realize, you know, many people asked me to put trash cans in the neighborhood and I told people I'll get a flat-out no from you guys because that'll only encourage illegal dumping.
Yeah.
You may be aware of a little island along Broadwell Ave between Oak Street and Park Ave that sits there. There's a little playground there. I've had people ask me if we could put trash cans there and all. I just tell people, I say, "We can't because, you know, with the sticker program and the like, it only encourages illegal dumping." But, you know, many of those people that live in those neighborhoods are elderly and they don't appreciate having to go out and pick up their lawn every day of candy wrappers or sandwich wrappers or cans and bottles. Bottles get broken in the street.
Maybe if police would patrol that during that period of time, it might help cut it down. You know, just the presence of the patrol might help.
I would appreciate some help in there and I know the neighbors would.
Incidentally, on that parking thing, have they done anything on the proposed parking?
They're parking there, but they didn't put any base in there or anything. It's become a mud hole at this point. It's getting worse every day. Well, I've been told by people in the school district that they are likely to have a parking lot, I believe, towards the athletic field sometime by mid-October. So hopefully by the middle of October, that problem will be resolved and the cars on Denisee Place will be gone.
Are they working on it, you know?
I've been told they hope to have something by the middle of the month and I hope that that's, I hope that that's true. Again, I'm reluctant to want to authorize any no parking signs up on a street that's never had them. Certainly, if you put them on one side of the street, you're going to make the other side of the street mad at me.
Yeah.
So I'm caught in a trap there.
That's pretty narrow anyway, isn't it?
It's narrow and the difficulty is buses can't commute around in corners.
Probably create a bigger hazard than solve the problem it would solve. I'll talk to the captain about some patrolling over there, see if that wouldn't help to reduce the incidence of trash.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Dan, Diana?
Coming down from South Street at the last on Baker. On the corner of business and saying, "The hedgerows come right down on sidewalk, you have to reach out into the intersection to see if there's a car coming." There's several of them, just like that in the city. I don't know, I know across there, there's one like that.
Fifth and State? Fifth and State? Sixth?
Are these at the city right of way?
North side.
Are these at the city right of way, though?
If it's a through state, it's fine. Because the other guy's going to stop it. If you've got a stop sign, you can't see, your car's right on the intersection. And usually, people in the hedgerows, it's beautiful, but they watch them right out. That's one area. I don't know, there's a couple more, would you say 17th and...
They plant trees around the firehogs there. It's shady because you plant trees around the firehogs.
What height? Trees around what height?
Seventh and Santa Cruz. You can plant small shrubber, brush and everything else, you hardly see the firehogs.
There's flowers and everything. Those are the sunside, there's half a sack and you go to water, you've got to walk...
Let me take a look at it and talk with the city engineer and see if it's on the city right of way. If it's not on the city right of way, I don't think there's much we can do about it. Pardon me? Well, our right aways are not uniform throughout the city. You know, some of them are only the width of the road, some of them are wider. There's no uniformity to it. But I guess the thing all depended on which original surveyor laid them out. And some of them are kind of strange results. But I'll take a look at it. I, you know, if I were the owner, I would want to do something about it anyway because it imposes a civil liability if there is lack of visibility and there's an accident. That could very well be the basis for a lawsuit. Anybody else?
I had just one more thing. I'd like to thank the staff at the Motor Lodge who put up a family for me last week that didn't have heat in their apartment, a mother and three children.
That certainly was very nice.
And that was on no notice. I called and was able to get an answer.
Well, it's nice to know there's still people like that around. Thanks, Jim. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
When trees are to be cut down in a ward, isn't the alderman supposed to be notified first before they're cut down or not? Or could any homeowner call and say, "I want a tree cut down," and it's down?
Oh, no, the alderman has to ask first.
Because in my ward, I'm not one for cutting trees down like Al. I think if you decide to sit, I've only had my three trees cut down. I try to keep it at a very minimum. I'll go look at the trees and if they could be trimmed, we'll trim them instead. It's also very costly. I had a tree cut down at 603 Pugue Street last week and got complaints on it. I never ordered it cut down. The owner of the property ordered it cut down. Okay. A 9th and 7th, we're on the list. The tree I'm talking about, the owner, the people that live there said all it needed was trimming, it was a good tree. And the tree's gone now and the whole block there is complaining about it. The owner of the property was Maribito. And it never, it never came to me.
With all the people running around there, they were beautiful trees. There's two trees in the neighborhood, they should be taken down by the city, understand that, sir?
If you know of trees that need to be taken down, you need to call and I'll put it on a list. But the ones on the 9th, whose house were they in front of, you know?
You or 6 Water Hall, I mean, you could down on Jeffy.
Well, I mean, if you want to tell me, I don't recall right. I don't know everybody's address.
This is Montini.
Okay, that was on the list.
According to the guy that cut them down to buy cotton, it's quoted Mr. Collins, them trees were ordered by the later self, not the city. Mr. Collins, this one, that's a nice guy, no slummers, and then this guy was like, and he could not believe, who the nicest trees in the neighborhood. There's one on the west or east corner of 7th and the 9th that shipped them down and there's one coming down, 9th Street between 6th and 7th, they shipped them down and they weren't touching a good belief that these trees were made. If they're on the list, the city would have paid for them.
Right, right.
These taken down by the personal individual. So all your stories right, sir?
I'm not telling stories.
The individuals had them taken down? Well, if they were on her property, there's... Now, if an individual wants to take his own tree...
An individual takes it down, no.
No, they don't have to notify us for that. It's all right.
Thank you, yeah.
Anyone else? Al? You aren't going to tell us about your tree, are you, Al?
Tree that my neighbor had taken down in front of Wyon?
Yeah.
Now, I'm asking for second opinion. I've been asking for years.
I agree with you.
And I think both are just the aldermen. But, but he or someone has to be able to make the jury get a second opinion. Now, if someone wants to cut down a tree in their own yard, he goes inside, breaks the leaves.
Yeah, you still have that right. You don't have many left, but you still can take your own trees down. You know, I thought after the dogs, we'd never have another problem like that, but now I guess we do with trees. If you don't take them down, you're bad. If you do take them down, you're bad. And I'm not sure, except yours. Except yours, Al. Except yours. Anyone else? Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, wait a minute, before we go out there, let me say what we're doing to go into there for, okay? Item one, personnel matter, city investigators, personnel matter. Two, oh, yeah, proposed litigation there. Two is personnel matter, attorney leave for police officer, that's personnel. Three is a personnel matter, water treatment, plant operators, and a pay raise. Pardon me? I don't know. You never know what's going to come out of these meetings, Bill. Why don't you stick around and find out?